I'm gonna go cross, it's fine, okay. Test one, two, three.
The one thing I had to do, is that working? Testing, 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 one, two, three.
Testing, one, two, three.
Testing, one, two, three.
Testing, one, two, three.
Test, one, two, three.
Test, one, two, three.
Test, one, two, three.
All right, Meredith, would you like to?
Hi, my name is Meredith Beachley. Some of my signs, if you've seen them out, say Miss Beachley. There's a reason for that. I don't have children in the district. I came to El Segundo in 1999 as a middle school teacher after teaching 17 years in Kansas City. Also a middle school teacher. My focus on math and science. So I came here, and I'm gonna be really honest, it wasn't because of the schools, because I didn't have kids. It was because I wanted to be close to the beach. What I found was a community that embraces education. And I was so lucky to be a member of the team as a teacher for 22 years here at the middle school. And when I decided to retire in 21, this was my next step. And this was my next step five or six years ago. I had always said, when I retire, I'm gonna, I'm gonna run for school board. Like, that's my next, that's my next step in my, in my educational journey. I graduated with a degree in elementary education, masters in education. I coached swimming for 12 years in Kansas City. Once I moved to, to El Segundo, outdoor science school became my thing. Some of you know me from that. And I'm, I'm just ready to take the next step and be a member of the school board.
Thank you. Tracy?
Hi, good evening, thanks for having us here, or having me back here. I'm having a little deja vu, I was here 24 hours ago. So it's nice to see everyone in the room, and hello to all of you in streaming land as well. My name is Tracy Miller Zarniki. I'm a 25-year resident of El Segundo, and I'm happily married to, with my husband Mike, who's over there. We have two sons, one who was a graduate in 2022 and is now at the University of Oregon. And the other is a sophomore here at our high school. We, my husband and I, chose to live in El Segundo because, yes, it's near the beach. But also because we knew someday we'd have a family, and we knew that the community and the schools were exceptional here. So that's what brought us to here, what, quarter century ago? And honestly, that's what almost everyone else says, why are you in El Segundo? Some say the beach, but most say the schools and the community. So I'm here, again, running for reelection because I want to keep that high-performing district the cornerstone of our community. So I want to continue the good work that I've done to keep us on that path. I, by nature, well, by educational background, I graduated from UCLA with a degree in English and Business Administration. I'm a writer, who therefore has a flexible workflow, so can show up to things as needed in town. I have used, I think I call myself a serial volunteer, because a lot of my time is given to volunteer efforts around town. And that's just been the way I've been wired for the last quarter century. I'm the only incumbent running for reelection. I have a great understanding of the public education process. I have valuable relationships that I've built over the years. My leadership skills have proven vital during the hardest of times. You know, that COVID thing was not the easiest to be in the public education arena during that. And we're still, we're still finding our way out of it. So I want to continue the good hard work that I've done and keep us moving in the right direction here in ESUSD. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move into the question section. First question, ESUSD has had a persistent before and after-school care capacity problem at the elementary schools. What do you think the district should do to meet this unmet need in our community?
Yes, we actually availed ourselves of TLC as parents. Is that working, Sam? Okay. And so I know how important that is, and some of the outreach that I got from members of the community when I was saying, hey, what's on your mind? What are you thinking about? This came up multiple, multiple times. It's an important part of working parents, and we have a lot of those in the community just so we can make it in this, in this community. And so I reached out to the TLC leadership. We've had some conversations, and they're working really hard, paddling like ducks trying to get this on par. The objective is to have sufficient capacity for the demand. They don't want to have a waiting list. And there were communications that were like, there's a three-year waiting list, and, you know, how you prioritize to get into the system. This is part of what led me to transparency and communication. It's really difficult to get the accurate information out to the people who need the information the most. And so that's one of the reasons I'm very interested in that. So their issue right now is staff. So first, it was COVID. They had limitations in terms of the volumes that they could bring back. I had a wonderful experience in elementary schools. I started out in the first grade, second grade, and then ended up in all of the grades in between, including middle school. I gave, I think that gives me a very good insight into curriculum and the importance of establishing a good foundation for our students to succeed in future grades. My interest is student-centered. I want to make sure that we continue the spirit of excellence here at El Segundo, and I'd like to be a part of that. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we'll let you work off time the next one. Frank, would you like to make some statement?
Yes, thank you. My name is Frank Glynn. I'm a 26-year resident of El Segundo, a homeowner, a business owner, and a parent of two successful ESUSD graduates, and one future graduate, fingers crossed. I'm running for school board because I believe in our town, and I am passionate about our school district. My wife Susan and I, like so many others I've met, moved to El Segundo precisely because this community values and supports excellence in education. This is a heritage that goes all the way back to the founding of our city and the vision of those who, in the late 1920s, built our beautiful high school. Year after year, community members step up to preserve and nurture this legacy, lending their time, skills, and expertise for the betterment of our schools and the quality of education. I am running for school board to be your representative of a community that wants to preserve and build on this great gift that has been handed down to us. Thank you.
Meredith, would you like to?
Hi, my name is Meredith Beachley. Some of my signs, if you've seen them out, say Ms. Beachley. There's a reason for that. I don't have children in the district. I came to El Segundo in 1999 as a middle school teacher, after teaching 17 years in Kansas City, also a middle school teacher. My focus on math and science. So I came here, and I'm going to be really honest, it wasn't because of the schools, because I didn't have kids, it was because I wanted to be close to the beach. What I found was a community that embraces education, and I was so lucky to be a member of the team as a teacher for 22 years here at the middle school. And when I decided to retire in '21, this was my next step. And this was my next step five or six years ago. I had always said, when I retire, I'm gonna, I'm gonna run for school board. Like, that's my next, that's my next step in my, in my educational journey. I graduated with a degree in elementary education, master's in education. I coached swimming for 12 years in Kansas City. Once I moved to, to El Segundo, outdoor science school became my thing. Some of you know me from that. And I'm, I'm just ready to take the next step and be a member of the school board.
Thank you. Tracy?
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having us here, or having me back here. I'm having a little deja vu. I was here 24 hours ago. So it's nice to see everyone in the room, and hello to all of you in streaming land as well. My name is Tracy Miller-Zarnecki. I'm a 25-year resident of El Segundo, and I'm happily married to, with my husband Mike, who's over there. We have two sons, one who was a graduate in 2022 and is now at the University of Oregon, and the other is a sophomore here at our high school. We, my husband and I, chose to live in El Segundo because, yes, it's near the beach, but also because we knew someday we'd have a family, and we knew that the community and the schools were exceptional here. So that's what brought us to here, what, quarter century ago? And honestly, that's what almost everyone else says. Why are you in El Segundo? Some say the beach, but most say the schools and the community. So I'm here, again, running for reelection because I want to keep that high-performing district the cornerstone of our community. So I want to continue the good work that I've done to keep us on that path. By nature, well, by educational background, I graduated from UCLA with a degree in English and business administration. I'm a writer, who therefore has a flexible workflow, so can show up to things as needed in town. I have used, I think I call myself a serial volunteer, because a lot of my time is given to volunteer efforts around town, and that's just been the way I've been wired for the last quarter century. I'm the only incumbent running for reelection. I have a great understanding of the public education process. I have valuable relationships that I've built over the years. My leadership skills have proven vital during the hardest of times. You know, that COVID thing was not the easiest to be in the public education arena during that, and we're still, we're still finding our way out of it. So I want to continue the good, hard work that I've done and keep us moving in the right direction here in ESUSD. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move into the question section. First question. ESUSD has had a persistent before and after-school care capacity problem at the elementary schools. What do you think the district should do to meet this unmet need in our community? Dawn?
Yes, we actually availed ourselves of TLC as parents. Is that working, Sam? Okay. And so I know how important that is, and some of the outreach that I got from members of the community when I was saying, hey, what's on your mind? What are you thinking about? This came up multiple, multiple times. It's an important part of working parents, and we have a lot of those in the community just so we can make it in this, in this community. And so I reached out to the TLC leadership. We've had some conversations, and they're working really hard, paddling like ducks, trying to get this on par. The objective is to have sufficient capacity for the demand. They don't want to have a waiting list. And there were communications that were like, there's a three-year waiting list, and, you know, how you prioritize to get into the system. This is part of what led me to transparency and communication. It's really difficult to get the accurate information out to the people who need the information the most, and so that's one of the reasons I'm very interested in that. So their issue right now is staff. So first, it was COVID. They had limitations in terms of the volumes that they could bring back into a room safely, as did everyone. And then it became bringing qualified folks who were able to work kind of strange hours. You know, it's a little bit before, a little bit after, the continuity of hours, you know, it's difficult to find people that that works for. But there's, you know, candidate pools, you know, sometimes early college folks. It's a good opportunity to get your legs that way. So they're working very hard. They won't give a firm date because they can't make, they don't want to make promises that they can't deliver on, but they're working very hard to get the staffing in place to be able to handle the before and after-school problem.
Thank you, Dawn. Yadranka?
Yes, hi, okay. Yeah, I understand. That's actually a big issue for working parents. I had to send my older son to TLC, and there was some issues there. But I think one particular issue that we need to attack here is this antiquated notion that we have here at El Segundo with the early bird, later gator program for kindergarten first and second. I mean, when my son, or my husband was in school 40 years ago, that is what he was going through, and now definitely we have a different time right now, particularly when we're talking about learning loss. These are the very, very delicate age group that needs to have more time in school rather than less time in school. So I think that if we were able to adjust them to a full-day schedule, that would be one solution. But of course, we still need the after-school care. So one thing that came to mind was, for example, aides here in, that are being requested on campus. If you look at the advertisements, they're asking part-time aides to come in, and that's fine. However, maybe we can incorporate that position. Some people don't want a top part-time position. Maybe we can incorporate the aides with the after-school program, so it makes it more worthwhile for them because it becomes a full day or closer to a full-day schedule for them. That was one suggestion that I had. In terms of other programs, I mean, it's wonderful that sports is going to be incorporated now into the middle school because I think that's something that kids can absolutely participate in after school and, because, you know, by the middle grades, they're, by the middle school ages, they're not really interested in, you know, feeling like somebody's taking care of them. They feel like they're adults and that they can take care of themselves, right? Although they can't. But, so, a sports program after school would definitely be a good thing and asset. Also, clubs after school, those are also viable options. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Yeah, so TLC is a necessity, especially in our modern society where, in a lot of cases, both parents are working. I know that at Richmond Street, in the past four or five years, we rebuilt the facilities there so that we had a, we do have a modern facility for our after-school program. And I am also aware that the district is working at the moment on expanding that program to later grades and to more school sites. What I see is that when an issue is brought to our school district, that the school district does react to it and find solutions, whether it's to do with facilities themselves or the staffing thereof. I believe that our leadership is aware and does try to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
So TLC is amazing. It does have its issues, and I do, I do agree, staffing is certainly one of the major issues at TLC. I think part of it is because of the hours that are offered, sorry, either in the morning or the afternoon. I think, you know, if we, if we could offer more full-time positions, I'm sure that that's something that the district would, would like to look at. The Spark program at the middle school, I have a little more knowledge of, just having spent so much time at the middle school. The kids didn't love it, but they also didn't hate it, which for middle school, that's a win. That's a win. It got better as time went on. They, the parts and rec workers, because it's a parts and rec program, did a better job as, as time went by to make sure that the kids not only had some fun and spark, but were also allowed to do homework and get some tutoring and some help. I'm really excited about the sports program coming back to the middle school, though. Really excited. I coached at the middle school, coached football and volleyball back in maybe, geez, I don't even know, 2012 maybe, so super excited. And hopefully that'll help with the issue as well.
Thank you. Tracy?
Okay, yes, so TLC is our before and after-school program. It has really blossomed under its new leadership the last few years. Ms. Guralva, who also is in charge of our Eagles Nest, has brought TLC into her realm as well. And she's definitely been very responsive to parental concerns, one of them being food. What we serve at TLC has been a topic of discussion, and that's been looked at and adjusted in the very recent past. And I do know this was a conversation a few years ago when we had a different food supplier. They have, they also work through that. But as far as space and staffing, those are the two issues that challenge us the most. We do definitely take a waitlist of who's interested, and then try to staff up according to what we see before the school year starts. And if any of you run your own businesses right now, you'll know that it's hard to find people to hire, and this particular job is challenging because of the odd hours that it does entail. So the staffing efforts have gotten more creative in indeed trying to reach out to local schools and to see if there are student teachers that might want to come and spend some time in child development, earning credit almost for their, their work here. So that is one solution that has been brought into play. Maximizing space is definitely a concern as well, and we're grateful that just a few years ago, Center Street had an expansion in its TLC facilities in the back of the campus. Richmond had a new one after that, as Frank mentioned recently. And with the addition of new buildings, new classrooms at Richmond this year, we'll have some more space that we can use for additional TLC outside of the classroom situation. The other thing I want to mention is Universal TK is coming, and that will back up the age of when students come to El Segundo Unified. So that will help as well. That will be like an extra year of preschool. That will now be part of the public school system. That will help provide coverage for parents in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Yadranka, the next question, if you'd start it, is, have you received any endorsements or donations from any groups? And if so, which groups?
Well, I have to be honest with you. I am a pretty quiet member here of the El Segundo community. I'm not part of any large organizations here in town like Kiwanis or the Rotary Club. So even though I've spoken with individuals at Kiwanis and Rotary, I haven't received any endorsements from them. I've been funding the campaign on my own, okay? I just recently decided to start reaching out to some members in the community after they've suggested that they would be interested in supporting me. So I have to say, no, I don't have any endorsements here in town.
Thank you. Frank?
Well, I'm a 26, 26-year member of the El Segundo Rotary Club, and I was a president of the Rotary Club for a year also. And the Rotary Club stays out of this. They don't endorse anybody. I'm not sure about the Kiwanis, but I think they're the same. I do have the endorsement of the El Segundo Teachers Association. Back in, I think it was August, all the candidates were sent a questionnaire by ESTA, which we filled out and submitted. And then we, we were all interviewed for 30 minutes by a panel of six teachers, and I'm very happy to say that I've been endorsed by ESTA. Thank you.
Meredith?
I am also a member of Rotary, although mine is much newer, and they do not endorse, neither does Kiwanis. I too am endorsed by the El Segundo Teachers Association. I know that you find that shocking after having taught there for 22 years. However, I too went through a process of interview, or of questionnaire, and I actually did my interview, my 30-minute interview, live from a cruise ship in Alaska via Zoom. So I am very proud of my colleagues in ESTA. I was a bargaining member of ESTA, a building rep for the middle school, and I went to the National Educators Representative Assembly for 16 years. So I'm very, very proud of the work that El Segundo Teachers Association does for all of our students, and I am very proud that they chose me to endorse for this position.
Thank you. Tracy?
Okay, yes, I too have the endorsement of the El Segundo Teachers Association. I truly respect that because, as a seated board member now, typically you have the board over here and the union over here, and opposite sides of the table for negotiation. And I truly respect the fact that they understand I am a balanced, fair-thinking person who comes to the table with, with nothing but logic and the best interests of our students in mind. They respect that, no matter how hard negotiations might get at some point. So I do appreciate their support, and their support is only in name and in the lovely postcard that you received in the mail. So I do appreciate their process, or their process of questioning all of us quite well. And also, as far as personal donations, I have only three friends that have said, no, no, I want you to use some money that's not your own to run this campaign. Honestly, I didn't want to spend any money on it. I saved my signs from the last time because I am big on reduce, reuse, recycle. So my signs have been in the attic for four years. They came out again for this election, so wasn't going to spend money on that, and I'm spending very little on flyers and whatnot because I just would rather keep it digital and green. So the three friends that have thrown small donations my way said, no, no, we know you're going to spend money, so it's there. And what I usually tell people is, I'd rather you just donate money to the Ed Foundation and don't give it to me. So that is where I'm offering to redirect money. In name, I also have the support of our mayor, Drew Boils, also councilperson Scott Nickel, and also councilperson Carol Purstuck. They have worked beside me in the last four years from their side of the city legislation, and they respect the work that I've done here and are proud to support me moving forward, again, in name, not financial. I've also been endorsed by Senator Ben Allen, who I've worked with as well, reaching up the ladder to his work, and I appreciate that respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn?
Okay. So the beginning of my campaign, this has been a real learning process, even understanding what it was from going down to City Hall and signing up and, and learning about campaign finance rules and, and the advice that I, I'd done a lot of homework before I got to the place of declaring, and, and so many community members, former school members or school board members, current school board members have just been extremely helpful and forthcoming about what you're getting yourself into, what the role is, you know, really thinking through it. So I did a lot of deep thinking beforehand, and one of the pieces of advice that I got from one of the community leaders that did endorse me, Suzanne Fuentes, was, you got to walk this town. You gotta, you gotta talk to people. It's a small enough town that you need to, to make the effort to, to reach out and give people a chance to, you know, interact with you. And so that's, that doesn't cost a lot of money. It just takes, the town's not quite as small as I thought it was, I must tell you. It's taken a little longer to cover than I, than I thought. But, but it's been a great experience. So from that perspective, I am self-funded, and part of that is I just didn't have to deal with the, there's a lot of laws, once you get to a certain level, that you have to get into. And I go, I think I can keep it under that. So, so I've managed that way. The other endorsement has been Lily Craig, who's been a dear friend for, you know, numerous years. Our sons grew up together, and so that, that was great. But she didn't endorse me, by the way, right away. It's, you know, she took her time to sort of watch, you know, who I was talking to, what I was, what I was listening and learning, how serious I was about the, the effort. So I'm, I'm pleased with that as well. But yeah, I think that's, that's my story. And thanks to El Segundo for the people who did provide me feedback along the way.
Okay, thank you. Frank, the next question is, please share your thoughts on the El Segundo Middle Schools' IB curriculum, block schedule, and IB grading scale?
All right, so El Segundo schools are unique in the South Bay in that we have the IB program at the middle school. And actually, it's one of the, one of the things that attracts students to El Segundo because it's a different type of learning. It's, it's project-based, it's hands-on, and I have an expert in it beside me, so I better be careful what I say. But my kids that went through it really enjoyed it. It's, it's very engaging, and, and we saw the fruits of it. My understanding is that it, you can't continue it into high school because it conflicts with the AP subjects. I, I, like I said, I thought that for our kids, it was a great fit, and it's at a perfect age at the middle school years for them to, to learn to engage with the other students for project-based learning. Sorry, there was another part of your question, and I...
The grading scale.
Oh, the, the, the block schedule, yeah. So we managed to the block schedule, yeah, the AB, and we did not have any issues with it. So I'm, I'm in favor of it. I think the, the longer classes help the kids engage more in the subject, so they're not bouncing around so much, and gives them a broader view and a better understanding of the subjects. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
Wow, I get to be an expert on something. So the IB program did change my teaching when we brought it to the middle school. It is project-based. It is definitely cooperation, group work. It is all about being global learners. The philosophy is incredible. The, the learning that takes place is amazing. The blocks, the schedule. I went through many, many schedules with IB. Those of you who have been around for a while, we've done six periods, we've done seven periods, we've done drop schedule, we've done AB schedule, we've done elective-not-elective, design-not-design. Where we settled, three years ago, I believe, was with the block schedule. I have some concerns with block schedule with middle-school-age students. 85 minutes is a really long time for an 11-year-old. 20 minutes is a really long time for an 11-year-old sometimes. The good news about a block schedule is if you're teaching science, you can get a lab done, which is incredible. So there's good and bad, just like there is about anything. I taught math and design, and so I was able to do it. The grading needs to be looked at. I do have some issues with the current grading at the middle school.
Thank you. Tracy?
Okay, yes, I'll try to cover all that. Okay, so the curriculum, I absolutely believe deeply in the curriculum. It's not just about facts and figures. It's about developing character and learning how to work with other people. Collaboration and being, you know, a citizen of the globe is definitely part of what our graduate profile for the entire district is based upon. So I love that we start to infuse some of those deeper when we get to middle school through the IB program. So I believe in that, and absolutely, in today's world, you need to learn how to collaborate, you need to work in group settings, and it's, it's a really vital skill that I think our, our students thrive when they are trained in this way and then can take it into high school, where they continue to do that in many of their classes. As far as the block schedule goes, yeah, the block, the schedule has been in various formations over the years, and I will tell you that right now, it is being looked at again because there have been concerns with how long people can sit still or cannot sit still. So I'm open to the research that's being done right now on what's appropriate for the schedule at the school. The grading scale is another aspect of that that is being considered right now, up for discussion. We're lucky to have a wonderful new principal, Sarah We're lucky to have a wonderful new principal, Sarah DeBlontis, who knows the middle school well, having been there before. And she's doing a deep dive into speaking with both parents and students, as well as teachers, to understand what works best for everybody and finding the proper middle ground for all that. So I do anticipate some changes may be coming in both the schedule and the grading scale. But I appreciate the deep dive of the actual stakeholders involved in making that decision. That's the people that they serve and need to be sure they're serving in the best way possible.
Thank you. Thank you. Dawn?
So the IB program is definitely a differentiator for El Segundo. But it comes with all the challenges that were explained here. And that's not necessarily IB-driven. It's any project-based sort of curriculum where you're trying to figure out how do you change teaching styles. And that's a real transition for everyone in the process. And I think what we have to do is, you know, just continue to be vigilant and continue to be demanding about, you know, for the school. And they are demanding. They watch their scores. They watch how the kids are doing in this environment. They watch for what's working. They're listening. And Ms. DeBlontis, it is very exciting because she seems to be extremely open to input from students, from teachers, from the administration, and from the community and parents as well. So I think that's going to be an important part of the transformation. I have a slightly different perspective. My perspective is you have to evaluate the answers to those questions, subject by subject and class by class. It depends. You know, like you were talking about in a science class, there are things you never have enough time. Where there are other classes where you're going to have to do something different because they're going to stand there and lecture for 85 minutes or lecture for 40 minutes and then tell the kids, "Ah, you catch up on stuff," or "Read a book," or, you know, you have to have a plan. So, and that's hard as teachers. They're transforming as well. So the fact that they're working together and trying to figure out that new path forward, we need to continue to provide input. We need to continue to provide support. And they need to continue to transform the classroom for this to really deliver what it needs to do. For grades, I'm a Navy kid who went to a bunch of different schools. That part, we'll figure it out. It's kind of math. If we're doing it right, you do tables and you math it out, but you shouldn't wonder. So the biggest thing that I think is you should know quarter by quarter, you know, period by period, how's your kid doing?
Thank you. Yedrinka?
Yes, IB, so International Backlord Program in the middle school. I understand that it is unique in the South Bay. And it's actually attracting permit students, which is something that the district needs in order to survive financially. So it's been good. It's been good for the, and successful for the district. My particular concern is not necessarily IB, but rather, I'm going to deviate a little bit from this. You know, it was around the time that my son was in the middle school, my older son, and the district adopted this whole iPad program, that everything was solely on the iPads. And I think particularly in the middle school, this is really a challenge because this is a different, this is a time when the kids are, you know, they have a higher workload. And we, as parents, because we don't necessarily see what's going on because it's all on the iPad, are not able to really help our kids. I remember that my son was struggling in math. And even though I was a math teacher in middle school for some time, I wasn't able to help him because I had no textbook to refer to and there were no worksheets or anything going home. And I know that's somewhat antiquated, you know, the idea of textbooks. And everybody thinks that it's cool that we have the iPads. But I think that, you know, we can't always be at extremes. We have to be a little bit of a delicate balance here, what works best for both the student and the parents to be able to assist their child. In terms of the block schedules, it is too long. And it's not really flexible either. So I'd be for revisiting that. I really think, having taught middle school myself for a while, you know what, there is a time when the kids just, they're done, all right? So you have to appreciate that fact that, you know, and we're definitely not serving our male students who particularly are the ones who tend to need a little bit more exercise and more activity. So I think that's not really the best plan for our students, the block schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith, we're moving on to the next question. What is your understanding of critical race theory and its place in our public schools?
Okay, I'm going to talk, I think critical race theory gets mixed up with a lot of different things. And I think there are a lot of people that don't really understand it. I think in our district, we really need to focus more on diversity and equality and inclusion and making sure that all of our kids are being taken care of, that they feel like they are part of the district, that they are equals, that we're all treating them the same, that they have the same opportunities. That we need to be teaching diverse curriculum and giving some of our kids the opportunities to, say for instance, in literature, read books that are like they are. Let them be a little more reflective in the literature that they read. I think there are a lot of misconceptions about what critical race theory is. And I think I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you. Tracy?
I think I can answer this in a very short way. Critical race theory is a subject that is not taught within our district. It is typically not taught until the collegiate level. And I think I do find some interesting translation when people hear the word, the letters DEI, and some other brain translates it into CRT. And that's just not appropriate. They're very different things. The CRT is a hot topic in certain circles, but it is not taught in El Segundo Unified School District. That's all there is to say on it.
Thank you. Dawn?
So ditto on CRT. I'll even elevate it a bit, that it's actually a graduate college-level course. And it's really trying to understand systems and equity in systems and systems design. So that are systems designed to deliver results that were intended or unintended. And as such, what are we doing to review those systems? That is not conversation that is going on even at the high school level. That said, the world is evolving. The world is changing. The world needs to continue to evolve and change. And DEI, as has been mentioned here, ain't new. It's been around for a long time. And if people are uncomfortable with that, we've got to get comfortable with that. You know, we can't say on the one hand, every child should feel included. Every child should feel valued. Every, and this includes the entire spectrum of, you know, identities, race, religion. My academic, I'm a high achiever, I have a learning disability. There's a whole spectrum of needs that kids have. That's all about watching, monitoring, learning, and making sure that children are equitably included in the classroom. And this district is, it's not new here either. They're not, this isn't a new consideration for the district. They care about the kids, and they're taking the steps to ensure that all kids are welcome. Now, that said, there's policy and there are incidents. There are things that happen. There are times when a teacher may make a judgment call that makes some parents uncomfortable. Let's talk about it. There are times when a child comes into a classroom and has a need for a special accommodation. I guarantee you, every effort is going to be made. But until you're satisfied as a parent, you need to keep on that until you've been satisfied that the proper accommodations are being made. So that is important. That is a part of what ESUSD is all about.
Thank you. Yedrinka?
Okay, thank you, yeah. Good question. So CRT is getting a lot of publicity in the media these days. And just to be clear, you know, this is a political theory. Since we are a nonpartisan organization here talking about schools, it really doesn't even belong in this discussion. But since you're asking the question, I'm really happy to address it. It is a political theory, really focusing on racism. And I understand that it's being pushed heavily by teacher unions. So what it is, is rather divisive because what's happening is the ideas are taking racism and sort of infusing them into the classroom in a variety of different aspects of curriculum. So it's really dividing children instead of uniting them. And in a way, we can think about it as going backwards instead of moving forwards. Kids are no longer thought of the content of their character, but rather placed in a box according to their race. So under the CRT umbrella comes diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI. So actually, the two are related. It's something that our district has fully embraced, the DEI model. And, you know, it sounds very fluffy and nice. Everybody is included and everybody has equal opportunity. And that sounds good. But the truth is, are all the kids included? Or are we just talking about some people, a particular sample of children that seem to be, you know, the idea of the day? I'll give you just one particular example, actually two. We have a significant population of special ed kiddos here. Are they included? We do have a teacher who was beloved teacher from Center Street School who actually left this year because he didn't feel he was included within the zone school that he worked in for many, many years. Was asked to teach some curriculum he didn't feel comfortable with and left the school. So we're losing some teachers as a result of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. So as I go around town, CRT is a question that comes up a lot on the doorstep. And my understanding is that this is not a theory that's embraced by our school district. It's not something that's taught here. But what we do teach is diversity and inclusion. And inclusion is very important for every kid. It's something that the teachers embrace in our schools, in our classes, to welcome their kids in every day, to make sure that each and every one of them, whether it's by religion, by race, by sexual orientation, that they feel included and part of the group. So as Tracy said, CRT is not part of what's promoted by the school district, and I don't believe it ever will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Tracy to start. How do you plan to address the increasing student population, specifically maintaining the appropriate student-teacher ratio in adequate facilities?
Well, on the number of students we have here in El Segundo, that does fluctuate based on the class. What the district does is admits all residents of El Segundo first and foremost. And then if a class size allows for more expansion to round out, say, a math class or a grade based on the amount of teachers in space we have, we will add permit students as necessary. We graciously, by virtue of the voters of El Segundo supporting Measure Yes in 2018, have been able to expand our classrooms on some campuses. Specifically, we've done it at Richmond and at the middle school to allow for some growth there if we do have more students moving into town or if we do have space to grow. We definitely respect the ratio of students to teachers as outlined by the state and also outlined by our union contract. So that is something that is mindful of every class size that is put together, either, you know, at the high school per session or in elementary schools in the single-classroom situation. So it's always a thoughtful math problem to solve in the proper ratio for each grade. And what we find is if we do have more students, we can then have more teachers and offer a more diverse class load, particularly at the high school is the place where we would want to have more electives if we have more students. But again, spaces is always a limitation. Happy that we've grown in this last bond. So that will be great for our student body coming forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dawn?
I liked your expression thoughtful math problem because I think that is what it is. It's sort of a formula. And honestly, I would have expected to be answering the other end of that question, which is, how do we keep enrollment at the right level? Because the challenge ends up being, you know, funding obviously is tied to enrollment. But we have this permit student relief valve, and people want to come to El Segundo. So we don't really have a problem if we have a deficit, being able to make up that deficit with external students. So I'm not sure that I have a whole lot more to add to that other than it is important to maintain proper class sizes. And it is a function that's been well thought out versus based on topic and grade level. So we'll continue to, that's our job as the school board, to continue to keep an eye on that and make sure it doesn't get out of control. And support the teachers.
Thank you. Yedrinka?
Okay, yes, all right. Thanks for the question. Actually, this is a complicated issue. So we do have more students than we've ever had before. The high schools specifically, there's 1,352. So just to put it into perspective, about 2018, we had 1,100 or so. So almost 200 more kiddos that are coming to school. Now, you know, one of the issues is this, I'm talking about the high school now. High school built in, you know, almost 100 years ago. And even though, you know, we've done some work to the high school, I mean, the high school hasn't changed much in that 100 years. And Main Street hasn't changed at all in those 100 years. So although we're accommodating much more traffic coming into town because we have more permit students that are coming in to make those inflated numbers. So there's a couple of issues here. The traffic that comes into town, the congestion, the need for extra parking, et cetera. The middle school, I want to touch upon that a little bit. So we have more students at the middle school, too. And it's interesting because actually, on the campaign trail, I've talked to a lot of neighbors in that area over on Center Street, and they're very, very frustrated and angry over the project. Not that they don't like the idea of gym and sports, but they're just wondering what it's going to do to the neighborhood. The gym is now going to be open on Saturdays and Sundays, open to club sports, and they're concerned, rightly so. What's going to happen with traffic on the weekends? Noise pollution, light pollution, et cetera. And back in April of 2021, there was a meeting with the residents, and the school district promised them, "We will not increase enrollment." Well, here you go, they did increase enrollment. So what I do want to say is this, how I'd like to end is, there was supposed to be a study that they performed. They didn't perform it because they were able to get away with it. There was a loophole regarding the not increasing the enrollment. But I think the study would have been helpful because it would have brought to light some of the questions that the residents have regarding traffic, noise, light pollution, congestion, et cetera. Finally, it's not safe, all those extra kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Thank you. So currently, our district enrollment is just a little bit over 3,500, which I think is the highest it's ever been. The fact of the matter is, we do have a relief valve, as was mentioned already, which is our permit kids. And they are somewhere around 20% of the total population in ESUSD. So the question that was asked was, what would we do with increased enrollment? And I assume the reason is someone is assuming that the population of El Segundo is going to increase, thereby creating more kids for our school district. Well, we have a relief valve because our first priority and our commitment is to the residents of El Segundo to teach their kids. So we have capacity within our district to take more kids from El Segundo, which would mean less permit kids. We also are committed to class size reduction. We've been doing it at the early grades. And the construction that's going on at Richmond Street currently with the new six-classroom building is designed specifically for that in mind so that we can reduce the class sizes at Richmond Street. The district is, with the teachers' union, is also looking at how they can reduce class size in higher grades. It's a complicated math problem, Dawn, because we're reliant on our ADA, which is average daily attendance, which directly funds our schools. So we have to balance what's coming in with what we pay our teachers and how many teachers we have. And that is my answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
It's so hard to be the last on a question because they've kind of said what needs to be said. I was shocked when I moved to El Segundo, or not to El Segundo, to California. The ADA was shocking to me because that's not how they work in Kansas. We just get, the schools are paid for. And it had nothing to do with average daily attendance. And so I was baffled by it, so I did some work on it. The amount of children that we have in our classrooms is directly influences the money that comes into the district. is directly influences the money that comes into the district. And if we don't have some of those permits, um, we lose some of the programming. We lose some really great teachers that are here because, um, of the higher numbers, because we get different funding. And it's a catch-22. I will say teaching sometimes thirty-six kids in a class was difficult. But you can, and you get used to it. And I, I think I did a really good job. In fact, during COVID, when sometimes I only had twenty, it was a little frightening, quite honestly. It's like, wow. Um, so I mean, I think it's a really tough balancing act. And I think our district does a really good job at trying to make it all work.
Thank you. Dawn, on to the next question. Um, what are your thoughts on offering elective classes that provide life skills such as wood shop, auto shop, and home economics?
Um, so, uh, yay, is, I, I do think that. Um, more and more, and I think the, um, district is trying to figure out how to incorporate more career. We say college and career, and then you see a lot of college and not as much, um, career. And there are some pretty lucrative careers out there for, um, folks who really want to work in the, uh, in the trades. And some of how you understand whether or not you, you want to do that back in the day, you know, in whether it was in home act when you, you know, guys and girls figuring out if they wanted to be chefs or, you know, designers, you know, uh, there's opportunities there that we can upgrade the, the, the old days experience to a much more modern, um, experience. But wood shops and, um, one of the things I have thought about with that, I actually, the, uh, Industry Advisory Board I was on was industrial, uh, engineering and manufacturing engineering. And one of their laments was because we were outsourcing so much of our, um, manufacturing from a, a US perspective, that it was a dwindling, uh, major because there wasn't as much manufacturing. The careers didn't seem to be there. They are scrambling now. They are active programs. They are filling up the industrial engineering and the manufacturing, um, engineering. And, and part of, um, the other thought that I had is, um, we live in a manufacturing basin. And one of the things that we did a lot was, um, from a industry perspective, is give our secondhand equipment. Our secondhand equipment is pretty cool. And, and also it's changing. So it's not the old shop that's in our garage right now, but it's, it's, uh, uh, computer aided design, um, technology. So, so we have the opportunity to, um, introduce those kinds of technical skills, um, as well. So I think looking at some more, um, tracks in collaboration with some of our industry, um, partners into our, uh, high school program would, would be something we, we definitely should be looking into.
Thank you. Yedrinka?
Yeah, thank you very much for bringing that up. Um, well, you know, when I was in high school, we did have wood shop and metal shop. And, uh, I'd love to see that stuff brought back. I'll tell you specifically why. Um, not everybody is cut out to go to a four-year. And I know that, uh, the high school pushes it very hard because it makes them look good. Their numbers are always high. In fact, I was at a high school PTA meeting about two weeks ago and one of the counselors came out to talk to the parents and all she could talk about was getting that college application out. I mean, really, what are we saying? What is the message we're sending to our kids that are not ready for a four-year? Coming out of this pandemic, kids are experiencing anxiety, social issues. They're coming to school depressed. I mean, this is not just a national problem. It's here, home, at home in El Segundo. And we have to deal with that. It can't be just like business as usual. Let's just do what we've done in the past. We have to address that. There are students who are not ready for the four-year experience. They're not ready to leave home yet. And what does that say to all of the other kids? I'm a failure if I can't go to college? What about the special ed population? There is so much that they can do. Be a mechanic, a chef, work in a store, et cetera. I mean, so much available to many of our children that are not ready for that four-year path. So I think that that's something absolutely I would see, like to see implemented at the high school. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Frank?
So, um, I do lament the fact that, uh, a lot of our kids, um, as one of my friends would say, don't know how to use a screwdriver. But, um, that's somewhat of a reality of our modern life and somewhat a reality of the affluence of El Segundo. Um, our school district is based on excellence in education. And that's our, that's our priority. I know that it doesn't cover everybody equally. But we do have a strategic alliance with, uh, SoCalRock, which is, um, a more of a hands-on education program, which is, uh, based in Torrance, where people can go and learn how to be a mechanic and can low and go and learn to be an electrician. And, um, it is a strategic alliance that, uh, our students can avail of. So, and so we have covered it. I, I didn't grow up in a system that, uh, where we had, uh, wood shop or auto shop. And, um, we had a different way of streaming. Once you got to the age of, uh, twelve or thirteen, you went one way or the other. You went the academic course or you went into more of a, a trade school. And, um, I see, uh, El Segundo High as being an academic school. And that's our priority. And we, we do it really well. And I think we should stick to our guns. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
I, showing my age a little bit. I, I took auto shop, um, in high school. One of, one of few girls who actually did. Um, and I do miss some of those things in our schools. Um, but we do have SoCalRock and we have some other opportunities. I think the other thing that we're starting to see a little bit more of as we start opening up the College and Career Center is internships at some of these places. Um, I know that, um, the coordinator of the College and Career is trying to get some internships at some of the, say, car dealerships and some of those places so that they aren't just college. Um, because I think you're right. Not every kid is made for college. Um, I look back sometimes and think I would have done really well if I'd done junior college for a year and maybe not jumped right into a four-year university. But I think those are some options that we have. I do know that the problem, at least part of the problem at the high school is teachers because it is very, very difficult to find, um, teachers to teach those classes now. It's difficult. And space is going to become, continue to be a problem, um, in our schools unless we build an auto shop, which is, or a woodworking shop or any of those other things.
Thank you. Tracy?
Yes, so we do indeed have a College and Career Center. I'm glad you mentioned that. I was waiting for somebody to mention that. Um, it is an opportunity for students to help explore what they might do when they're done at our high school here. And correct, not everybody goes to college at a four-year way. Uh, we definitely have a tight partnership with El Camino College and also suggest any other number of community colleges that might be of interest to students. Um, the, the tricky thing about trying to teach careers at a high school is careers are ever-changing and ever-evolving. And say, for example, you had an auto shop at the high school, the technology would be out of date in a minute. And again, finding the teacher to teach that is the other challenge. So we are grateful for the partnership we have with SoCalRock and we do promote that amongst our students. Uh, they can have the latest and greatest in technologies and teachers all combined together for all the South Bay schools to feed into. Um, they do work with local industry to understand what the actual career paths would require students to learn in order to launch into those, uh, right from their, their time in SoCalRock. So, uh, that, that conversation is happening in helping to train students for jobs in this local area. Um, the internships are definitely a way that will be rebuilt. COVID kind of took that away from a lot of our opportunities for students. But we are coming back this year with, I believe, Career Day and, uh, internships that will be offered to our students. And those will be ways for them to explore what they might do after high school. I definitely didn't know what I wanted to do when I was in high school. I didn't even know what I wanted to do until I got to college and tried out a few classes and went, oh, writing, that's a good thing. I think I can do this. So, you know, it, it does take time to, uh, understand what your life goal is. And I think here at El Segundo, we do a great job offering many launching pads for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Yedrinka? The next question is, what steps will you take to ensure that both the elementary schools can accommodate the increased number of children who will be eligible for transitional kindergarten? The, the two elementary schools, um, they're going to need, um, what do you, what steps will you take to ensure that they can handle the addition of transition?
Oh, like the load of the students that would be coming in for TK? Well, sure. I mean, uh, we're, uh, due to the, uh, the wonders of the bond and all of the money that was raised, we now are going to have six brand-new classes in Richmond. So absolutely, we're going to have the extra space for it. Um, one tricky thing is we have to keep in mind, and this goes back to a question that you asked before, we're going to need additional staff to, to take care of TK. Not only the faculty, but the staff, the aides behind that, et cetera. And we have become a school, right now we have thirty-five hundred kids and we have about five hundred minus-plus, uh, staff, faculty at the, at the five schools, at the five sites. So where we are right now is pretty much at a ratio of seven students to one faculty member, one staff member. So, um, that's a big strain on the budget when you think about that. All of those people that are being paid salaries and all of the, uh, benefits that are going to those people. I'm wondering if we're veering a little bit too much into that area of being too bureaucratic and taking some of the budget away from student services. Uh, but going back to TK, that's going to be something that we're definitely going to have to consider because we're going to have to hire more staff and that adds to the increasing amount that we already have. Um, how is that going to fit into the budget? And does that mean taking away from certain programs? Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Uh, it's really a facilities question. The thing is that, um, the more students we have, the more money we'll have. So currently we have a hundred and ninety-nine certificated, um, staff, meaning teachers. Uh, so that number would increase, uh, with the additional TK. Um, I know that the, the age for TK is moving back and it's moving back, uh, incrementally so that the, uh, our district will have the opportunity to slowly add, uh, to the number of classes that we have. And, um, what, what I would like to say is that we have a tremendous, uh, district office. We have just fabulous people, uh, administrators who, um, are always looking ahead. They're very tied into what's going on in Sacramento, what's coming down the pike. And they have thought about this and they will figure it out. They, and we have spoken about it in our facilities committee, that additional classrooms will be required because as we know, the, in the, especially in the younger years, the class sizes have to be small because you just can't handle a room full of three and four-year-olds, you know, uh, beyond a certain number. And, uh, just, uh, on a personal note, I would like to say that all three of my kids were TK kids, um, at Richmond Street. And it's been a huge value to us to have had that great start at El Segundo. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
I, I think we're really lucky here in El Segundo. We started our TK program years and years before this mandate is coming down on us. Um, we've been, we've been, we've been doing TK for a long time and we do it well. Um, we do it really well. I think, yes, we are going to have to get more teachers, um, obviously with more students. Um, again, that's the whole rotation of money, funding, ADA. Um, that all comes to play. But I'm excited about transitional kindergarten. Think it's important. Um, I think it is going to help families with the, with kind of the childcare issues that some people have. Um, I, I think there's a lot of things that we're looking at. A lot of things have been in the pike for a long time. The TK's been, they've been talking about this for, I don't know, eight, nine years. Um, to give you an example, we, the legislature has been talking about the change in high school, the high school, um, schedule for at least ten years. So things take a long time. Our district's known this is going to be happening and they've been working on it, knowing that it's going to happen, which is part of the reason that the bond was so important, knowing that we were going to need facilities to take care of this when the time came.
Thank you. Tracy?
Yep, uh, you, you hit the nail on the head. We have been doing this for years and, um, we have had teachers, well, Ms. Murray was a longstanding TK teacher here. And sure, there might be some people in the audience who had her. But, um, we have been prepared for this. We've seen this coming and, and it will, as I mentioned earlier, help with some of the, the parents who need to go back to work sooner. Their children will be able to be brought into ESUSD sooner based on the years that are rolling back or the, the month birthday thing is rolling back to slowly allow this expansion. Um, the thing we just learned is that there are training grants that we can tap into so that teachers that are here now or teachers that are up and coming can be trained for what they need, the special accreditations for universal TK. Um, we have some support for that. So it won't be teachers having to go back to school to get the right accreditation. They will be given, well, on their dime, I should say. Yes, they will need more training. But on, uh, grant money, we will be able to help our teachers that will come to support this program. Um, and I will say, we are a small district. We are very lean-staffed, actually. We have, uh, district persons in the main office here who wear multiple hats. Whereas bigger districts have people that handle certain things in a multi-level sort of pyramid way. We've got one person here to do that. So, uh, we're not top-heavy in any way here. Um, I will say that, uh, we thoughtfully want to make sure our student ratios are, are managed. TK will be no different. We will find the qualified teachers and staff to help us bring this into a wider range of students for ESUSD. It's not going to be a problem.
Thank you. Dawn?
Uh, so, um, yes, 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 to the things that were said. So I, I, I won't, um, repeat. Um, I think the, the good news is, um, it has been a long time coming. And one of the things that in my, like, learning tour, um, and, and study tour that I, that I discovered is we have a very conservative, um, district, particularly fiscally. So, um, if, if they are, they hear something is coming, but they don't yet know for sure it's in our coffers, they plan as if we don't have it. And then if we get it, that's plus up and we can make room. We can do some extra things. So, so we've never, uh, planned in arrears, you know, if, if you will. So that's, um, I've been very impressed, um, with, with that. Um, also to, to the point, Yedrinka, I'm not sure where you, you got your numbers, but that is one of the things that I was looking at too. You, you look, when you try to understand how we're doing as our district, our, our numbers are really good. But then you try to look at all the things. So our, our performance, how does it compare? Uh, you know, our, um, administration, um, to, uh, uh, population ratios, our teachers to population, um, ratios, those are all important issues. And, and, uh, we are in line. And if anything, we've got, we need to put some more teachers in the classroom. You know, we're a little under in the, the administrative, um, arena. So we don't have an issue there. What I, what I, um, did hear from one of the, um, principals, um, that I found, uh, you know, when he was describing how the district handles things that I really liked, it's, one of the things that El Segundo's done a really good, um, job of, the district has done a good, really good job of, is they think strategically. So they're not trying to be reactive to the things that pop up, but things pop up and you have to deal with them. But, but in generally, in general, the way he described it is they lay the fire line instead of fighting the fires. And, and I thought that was a, for me, that really, uh, helped a lot. We got to be thinking years forward because like you said, these things take time. You don't instantly have classrooms.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we're moving on to the next question. Frank to start. How would you address the loss of the tennis courts at the high school?
So, uh, the tennis courts at the high school. Firstly, um, there, there were or are four tennis courts at the high school. Firstly, there, there were or are four tennis courts at the high school, two on the upper level, two on the lower level. And they are being replaced by the new band building plus a new community classroom, which is designed for extent, what's the right word? Additional education for young adults up to the age of 21, I believe. The, obviously, the tennis courts were quite low use in terms of total population because even maxed out, you would have 16 players at one time. The school district has an agreement with the city to use the tennis courts at Rec Park. So we already have the situation covered. So there's, there's not going to be any loss to our students. We have an agreement in place with the city to use four tennis courts during school hours and six tennis courts when we are in competition with another school because that's how, how many courts are required for school meet, as it were. The tennis courts themselves were actually in disrepair there because I played on them myself. There's a large crack going through the upper court. And I believe that the school district, in concert with the city, has already solved the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
I, you hate to see sports places being tear, torn down, but it's for a purpose that I believe is well-needed with the band building and the additional, for the concession stand and the, and the extra room for the special ed students who will be staying on with us. The courts were in disrepair. They needed quite a bit of TLC, and not the same time we were talking about a minute ago because that would be of no purpose whatsoever. I think it's been a difficult road with the city, with the Parks and Rec, but they have, I think, finally gotten it taken care of. They're working on getting storage and some other things so that the equipment and everything that's needed for the tennis team will be taken care of at the, at the, at the site where the tennis courts are, at Parks and Rec. So I think they finally now have that pretty settled. And, but we can't just say, you know, it's not important because it's not a big enough sport. For the tennis players, it's, you know, that's what they, that's what's important to them. So we need to think about them. But I do know that they have taken care of the problem, the issue is done, and they are going to keep playing tennis.
Thank you. Tracy?
Yeah, I think this question might have been posed before the principal sent out the email saying, it's settled, we're good. But, but to further dive into the history of this, when the facilities master's plan was being developed in 2016, and what the high school needed was part of that big question. When the idea of the community-based instruction building, which is also the band building, which is also the snack bar slash ASB area, the multi-use building, that's going to go on the footprint of the tennis courts. When that was first being discussed, the district did go to the city and say, we've got our joint use agreement, right? We've got the tennis courts, we will be covered? Yes, yes, that was the answer before any consideration of taking that out was in place. So I can tell you that. We definitely have had half of those tennis courts in disrepair for longer than I can recall. They're expensive to maintain, and again, you know, having the city with their way-better tennis courts just down the road has been what's accommodated the team for years, for some practice and definitely all competition. So we're fine with that, and it will be taken care of for our tennis teams for this and future years.
Thank you. Dawn?
Yeah, so I think the question's been adequately answered. I think that what I would say is between what the city's willing to invest in and what the school district has invested in, we're extremely fortunate in El Segundo with our facilities. I'm a swimmer and swam at the plunge and lived through the heater going on and on and on and on. The Aquatic Center, I am so in love with it, just took so long for it to become a reality. My kids ran track, remember I said 2006, 2007, on a dirt track that was freaking dangerous? That's the bottom line. And now we have a stellar track. This town invests in club sports, in school sports, in adult sports. I think there is no sign that there's anything, but you should expect to see more and more of that. And the criticality is this collaboration between the city and the school district to make sure we're optimizing those, because we are kind of a limited footprint, which also makes getting to these other facilities not that hard. Annoying, but not that hard.
Thank you. Yedranka?
Okay, sure. So I'm not an athlete, but I do appreciate the benefit of sports, absolutely. And just a side note, coming off of the pandemic, we now know that the majority of people that suffered greatly or passed away as a result of COVID were the ones that were, had all health-related diseases that were either related to lack of exercise, poor eating, lack of nutrition, et cetera. So, I mean, sports is something that we want to boost. We want to have a robust sports program. We want to teach our kids about being active and the importance to stay active and to have good nutrition, and that's all very, very important. So I think anytime a facility goes away, be it a tennis court, or a baseball diamond, or even the plunge, it's sad to see. My son was a swimmer. He swam water polo, and he was part of the swim team at the high school. And when the pledge closed down and the Aquatic Center opened up, everybody was, wow, this is a great new facility. However, it was not ideal. The plunge was really much more, it was easier to get to for the kiddos, but when they had to go to the Aquatic Center, there was the issue of transportation. The school didn't provide transportation. And finally, the Aquatic Center is multi-use, right? So they had to share it with other people, whereas the plunge was just dedicated to the high school kiddos. So even though traveling to Rec Park would not be a big deal, they can do it on foot, or they can ride their bikes over there. Nevertheless, I mean, Rec Park is open to other facility, or other groups as well, not just solely the high school students. So I think there might be still some challenges there. I just am sad to see, finally, the band building, of course, you know, that's, that's important to many families. But there's a lot of emphasis on band here in the town. We know that the Ed Foundation helps the band, and we found out later that sports is not helped by Ed. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question, Meredith. What do you think the school board's role is in the nutritional quality of school meals and snacks?
Well, I think we certainly have to look at that. I will be 100% honest, I never ate at the middle school cafeteria. I just didn't with 30 minutes, and I needed to be away from the kids. It was, it was the only break I had without them. We have to, we have to be very concerned. I mean, we certainly, I know we've gone through a couple of different companies. I know that we've worked very hard at trying to get nutrition, but getting the kids to eat what you serve them is also a chore. We all know that. I do think that the times are difficult, but a lot of the kids bring their lunch, partially because they don't want to eat what's served, partially because they don't want to stand in line. But nutrition is certainly important. And the new state mandate is that the kids are getting, getting their lunches for free. So I know that it is being utilized more now than it used to be. And I think that's important. I don't think we've fixed the problem, but I think the district is doing everything, everything they can to try to make it better. But I'll be 100% honest, I've not tried it out.
Thank you. Tracy?
Yeah, so El Segundo has an interesting history of what we, what we think our students will eat and what they should eat and all that. There was, a few years ago, a nutritional director hired by the district at the demand of the community that felt like we needed more focus on this. And shortly after she was hired and tested out some new recipes and all this, there was a protest because she took chicken nuggets off the menu at one school, and turns out, she was let go shortly thereafter. So the taste buds of the schools and the community definitely vary over time. I will tell you that the current partner, Sudexo is the main company, but works closely with the cafeteria managers, the lunch ladies, as we call them lovingly, that have been here for years, supporting what they do and how they want to serve their students. They definitely aspire to have more scratch-based cooking, not just things that are warmed up. COVID was a problem because things had to be sealed, and there were many health regulations related to that. But now that we're coming out of that, we're going back to more scratch-based things. They've hosted taste tests with students. They've taken input from students to, who've requested more plant-based foods. They've done taste tests with those recipes as well. So they are listening and responding and, and working with the student population to give them what they will eat and what is healthy for them. I will say that they do take an analysis of what gets eaten and what doesn't get eaten. So there are adjustments made all the time. If this particular item is clearly not popular, it's not going to come back. So they are looking at that. Food waste is a big concern as well, and they seek to find a partner so that if we do have an overage of food, we can donate the food to an entity that can use it. But they are very mindful at not wasting food in the first place and matching it to our kids' taste buds. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dawn?
Yeah, this was a popular topic when I was talking to parents, and it's not consistently popular in terms of what the opinion is either, which is why it really is a challenging problem. Not to go back to the old days, but I used to think it'd be so cool to get lunch at, at school because we always had to bring our sack lunch or whatever, you know? And a lot of parents, there's a lot of options now to be able to do, you know, your own prepared lunches. The schools are trying really hard. One of the things I did when I got the input was I said, well, what does the, you know, what are the schools in our area, what do their menus look like? And they're pretty similar. You know, there may be a little more brown rice on one than another. So you'd go, well, maybe whole wheat, you know, burrito as opposed to just a burrito. But the, the real challenge is, let's keep working this together. The folks who really care about what's in the cafeteria, be a part of the process, encourage your kids to participate in the taste tests, you know, provide feedback to you so you can provide feedback. We're not going to get it perfect because put five kids in a room and they're not all going to agree with each other, but that doesn't mean we can't get better. When you can provide it yourself, there's a whole lot more food allergy sensitivities now that just weren't so much an awareness or a focused thing before that you have to pay attention to. So I think people are trying really hard to get it right. And if you're really concerned, help us help you figure this out.
Thank you. Yedranka?
Okay, yeah, on the campaign trail, it seems like this is not a popular issue, the free lunch. Some people think it's wasteful, it's not good quality, and going back to what I said before about, we have to focus on nutrition for our kids, we have to focus on exercise, making good choices. This is something that we can definitely take away from the pandemic, how greatly it affected people who were diabetic, heart disease, et cetera, poor nutritional choices in terms of the decisions that they made. So how do we emphasize that stuff? Well, you know what, interestingly enough, I mean, I remember the day when I used to actually pay for putting money into my lunch account for both of my kids. And then I find out there's a free lunch program that came up and came, seemed to come out of nowhere. But to use a popular phrase, no such thing as a free lunch. Well, there really is, quite literally, no such thing as a free lunch. I mean, we have a free lunch, but what has the school done in order to get that free lunch? So I think we need to weigh the benefits of that. Are we getting a poor quality for the, you know, for the convenience of it being free? I don't know. But moving on to that, I mean, I understand it's a difficult thing. Every morning, we have to go through it ourselves, trying to pack a lunch for our son. So it's not easy. However, I think that we could explore different options. I did want to say this, that a health and nutrition class in the high school and in the other classrooms, middle school and even in the elementary school, absolutely. I think that would be key if we offered that, in addition to more options for the kids to stay active, not only PE and recess, but, you know, more time to be outside. I think that that would be great if we put a greater emphasis on health and wellness and making good diet choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Yeah, so nutrition is something that's near and dear to me. I'm a plant-based person, although I wouldn't force that on anybody. What I see the issue being is that we don't educate our kids enough about nutrition. And what I would like to see is that as part of our PE program, that we include nutrition and personal health. We have PE every day at the high school. And when we were at our recent back-to-school night, I asked the PE teacher, do you talk to the students about nutrition and personal health? And she said, no, but that would be a good idea. And I thought that, you know, why not? Why can't you have every day just five minutes of that PE class? Talk about what you eat and what you do to take care of your body. And some of it will stick. There's no point in having salads at the cafeteria if no one's going to touch them, if they're going to end up in the trash. But I firmly believe that if kids are educated and they know what is good for them, not all of them, but some of them, will move to healthier choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy, we're moving on to the next question. What is your perspective on parents having input on controversial curriculum topics such as sex education and ethnic studies?
Well, I know that our teachers obviously have state standards they have to teach to. And there are definitely moments when parent permission slips or opt-out opportunities come, and those are respected. I can tell you that I know teachers are open to having discussions about what they teach and why they teach it and how they teach it. Our principals are as well. This is, this is an open dialogue to be had. I do know that teachers are trained to teach students so they know the best way to talk to students at age-appropriate levels about age-appropriate topics. So I trust what they're doing, but I know that they are welcome to conversation about how and what they're doing at any time that parents have concerns. I've seen it, I've suggested to parents to go and speak with their teachers. And again, and if they aren't having dialogue they wish to at the teacher level, the principals and vice principals are open as well to those conversations. And again, it moves up the chain of command as necessary, but the conversation is there. Parents can look at what their students are doing at any time they ask. It's an opportunity, so parents can take it if they so choose. That's all.
Thank you. Dawn?
So these are important questions, both for the teachers and for the parents, in terms of what is your role in, in terms of influencing what's going on in the classroom? And for a teacher, in terms of how many inputs can they respond to and try to teach a, you know, consistent course to their students? So my take on this one is, when you're provided survey opportunities, participate in the survey opportunities. Provide as specific a feedback about what it is you're looking for as you possibly can because that's the kind of stuff that gets brought back to the board so we can see thematically what are the things that aren't being addressed that should be, what is happening that parents are concerned about. If there's a real-time concern that you're, that you've, some incident or experience that you've had, bring that up real-time with the teacher. Start with the teacher. If the teacher doesn't resolve the question, answer the question for you. Because by the way, it might end right there, once you understand what way, it might end right there, once you understand what actually happened versus what your interpretation of it was, but your interpretation of it might be spot-on. And you don't make, achieve resolution with the teacher, then elevate it to the principal. If you're not satisfied with the principal's response, then you elevate it to the superintendent. And, along that line, one of the things I've learned is that the superintendent and the school board have a lot of communication back and forth specifically as it relates to issues that are arising. So they're kept in the know about things that are going on. All that, so my point is, use your avenues. Be an advocate when you're asked for surveys, because a lot of times I'm surprised at how low the response rates are. So if you are concerned, be vocal and participate in the process. But once that's done, I am empathetic for the teachers also, that they're trying to teach to classes of 20 to 35, depending on what their, you know, student-teacher ratio is, and they are actually trained to be teachers, and most of us aren't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question. So I'm on the side of parents, even though I was an educator for many years and I know that it's challenging. That's one of the primary reasons I decided to run for the school board, because parents do need to have a voice, and we're seeing that is actually diminishing, and we're entering into some challenging times here in terms of education. Title IX guarantees that parents do have a role in their child's education. We also see that in the district, they have on their website, it's located as one of their goals, that they'd like to see more parent involvement regarding their child's education. And, so, it's out there, they're talking about it. Do parents really have as much voice or as much opinion as the school is hoping, or the district is hoping they do? That's questionable. In terms of curriculum, and if there is something that they see on campus they're not happy with, parents absolutely should have a voice in that. When I taught in school, we used to talk about parents and the importance of parents in terms of they are the first educators of your children. Parents are the first educators of your children, and that's something to keep in mind, absolutely, when talking to parents about a variety of issues. So, when a parent comes forward to you and says, you know, "What's going on here? I'm not happy with this particular conversation you had yesterday, or this is something that you sent home for homework", I think their concerns need to be taken seriously, objectively, and absolutely, they should be, feel that they have the right to come forward and discuss these issues. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Yeah, absolutely, parents should have a right to object to any educational material that is objectionable to them. Our school district does give many, many avenues for parents to be engaged. There's school-site councils, action plan focus groups, principals advisory committee, there's a PTA, there's a wellness committees. There's lots of ways for parents to be involved and make their voices heard. And, as has been mentioned also, is that they can talk directly to their teachers. The teachers in our district are very welcoming to parent input, and they're, in my experience, are very accepting of particular needs, whether it's to do with value systems or religion. If there's something that's specific to you, address it with your teacher, and I think you'll find that the matter will be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
Okay, I'm going to go a little different direction, obviously. As a teacher, I have certainly, and as a science teacher, I've had to teach standards that might be objectable to some parents, and I've had numerous, and I'm going to say numerous, students that have opted out of various topics in my classroom. And it was a simple email from a parent saying, or, "We have permission slips, we've had other", but an email just saying, you know, "This is not something that I'd like my child to learn." And, then it's, you know, how do you gracefully dismiss that child to kind of miss out on that lesson? And, teachers are really good at finding alternatives. We went to school for a reason, we learned those things, and so, while it's a difficult topic, you know, the teacher should always be your first avenue. I think all of these other wonderful PTA and site council and all of these surveys, you know, I've done surveys where I got eight people that responded, so it makes it a little difficult to understand. We also have choice. I know reading has been one of the issues. Make sure that you, you know, feel free to read the book, and if it's one you don't want your child to read, choose a different book.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question, Dawn. What do you value and what will be your guiding compass in making decisions?
That, I kind of articulated in the very beginning, that all the decisions that I'll be making are the impact, what, how is that decision going to impact our child? So that has to be number one, and it's not, it's not my child, and, as I said, my kids are long through the system already, but it's children in general. So when we're making a decision and it's about making parents feel comfortable, or making the administration look better, you'll hear all kinds of reasons why certain decisions may be being made. Our responsibility on the school board is to advocate on behalf of the children. The children have voice through their parents, have voice through the community, but our job is to safeguard the impact to the child. So, but for me, that'll be first and foremost. The secondary issue, because it's, you know, just kind of a responsibility of the school board as well, is to be fiscally responsible and make sure that we're spending our money, and that was a surprise to me, how challenging the budget is for a district that's as well-off. We're not the most well-off, but we're a pretty well-off community. That's not the way the budgeting system works. The money goes back out and comes back in and is allocated across all of California, which services a lot of needs. So I'm not even complaining about how and why the monies are allocated, but it causes us to be very careful about managing budgets so that, like we said, we can manage during the swells and the ebbs of finances. So, take care of the kids, watch the money.
Thank you. Yedrinka?
All right, thank you. Well, as a former educator and as a parent, I know from my own experience in the classroom and my own personal experience with my kids at home, that everybody can learn. All students can learn. They just need to be provided with the proper environment, the tools, the resources in order to be able to do so. So, on the school board, our priority should be student-centered, number one. That would be my main focus here at the board. In addition, it needs to be family-centered. We want to make sure that parents are participating in their children's education and definitely have a voice and are able to communicate with us if they have any concerns whatsoever. I did want to bring to light, a couple of months ago, the lawsuit that came forward regarding a student who felt that they were not being treated well on campus and they felt unsafe. The parents didn't come, did come forward to the administrators and talked about it, however, nothing seemed to happen, their concerns were dismissed. We know the result of that, the lawsuit that was settled. And I think that just goes back to the point that I'm trying to make about, parents really need to be heard, and, you know, objectively. If they have a concern, faculty, staff, administrators, bring it forward and take it seriously and move on that concern. What I did want to say with, in closing, is regarding the school board. Now, I really feel that the school board in some respect has been compromised. It's no longer the objective body that it's supposed to be, five people working in tandem with the superintendent. I have been at the board meetings and it seems like every single agenda item, yes, 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 yes. We only have one individual who is agreeing, who has a dissenting opinion. That doesn't seem like an objective body anymore that's discussing, reviewing, arguing, debating, opinion, and that's really what we need to see at the school board again. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
So, getting back to the question, I think my north star is, what is in the best interest of the students? And that's why we're here. We're here for student achievement. So, if we have a question to answer, that's the first place we have to go. What is in the best interest of our students? After that, there's a myriad of other considerations. There's what's in the best interest for our staff, because we have to ensure that our teachers are getting the support that they need. We have, another consideration obviously is fiscal. We have, the system that we have in place is that our school district has to budget out for three years. So if there's headwinds financially, we have to be prepared for those. After that, you know, we have to make sure that the facilities are adequate for our students. But, I guess the answer to your question is, the north star is, what is in the best interest of our students? And, how do we make sure that our students are prepared for a changing world? And, look at our graduate profile, is something that has been developed by the district in cooperation with parents and teachers, and it describes what we want our students to be when they graduate. It's in every classroom, and it's something that I believe in, that the attributes of our graduates are extremely important, that they do meet our modern requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
I'm going to make this real simple. I got into education forty-seven years ago for a reason, and the reason was the kids. That's why I got into education in the first place, that's why I stayed in teaching for thirty-nine years, and that's why I want to continue to be in education. And I believe that with the institutional knowledge that I have about the district, after having taught here, I've done a lot with the fiscal, I've done a lot with the curriculum, I've done a lot with teacher environment and teacher feelings and parent transparency. I've dealt with all of that, and I still really want to do this job. This is what I want to do. I want to stay in education, and this is the way I want to stay there. So I hope I answered the question.
Thank you. Tracy?
Yes, to go back to your question, what I value is the whole child. What we look at isn't just about teaching facts and figures and things that they can apply to good test-taking and all that. I want to make sure we are here to create empowered learners who are empathetic individuals, who are independent thinkers, who are responsible citizens of the world. So I will look at the entire student experience to make decisions, from all aspects of what they are here in ESUSD to do. I absolutely am puzzled by the characterization of the board that was made earlier, because the board is here to make high-level policy decisions. We trust that the staff that we have hired, who are quality staff, by the way, I don't think we would get to being, I think we're now the nineteenth-best school district in the state. I don't think we'd get there without hiring smart people who make smart, educated choices, who we then ask questions of before we make such decisions, and then understand why we are doing what we're doing. There's deep learning and research on their part and on the part of a responsible board member to understand every decision we make. But again, all of that work, all of that focus goes back to each individual student for who they are, and helping us to help them at whatever level they need. Academic, if they have special education needs, if they need social, emotional support, we are here to make good decisions for the entire student experience, and I will always keep the student first and foremost in any decision I make. Thank you.
Thank you. So that will conclude the question part of tonight's program. So now each candidate will get two minutes to sum up, and so we'll start with Yedrinka. Please go ahead.
Great. All right, well, thank you. Thank you all for, again, coming out this evening, your patience in listening to all of us. You know, as I said in the first debate, I have been a longtime member of the El Segundo community, albeit a quiet one. In fact, joking aside, I never even had a Facebook page prior to this campaign. So, you know, when you asked earlier, who was I endorsed by, unlike my colleagues sitting here, I do not have the endorsement from the Teachers Association, and actually, I'm proud of that because it makes me an individual who can make decisions based upon students and families and not have any loyalties to anybody else. So, I did want to say, if anyone here or listening at home has any problem with the particular direction the school district is taking, or any particular direction the school board is headed, I'm appealing to you that I'd like to be your agent of change. I am, if you will, a clean slate. I am not a member of the Teachers Association, nor am I a former El Segundo teacher. I'm not a member of any of the large organizations here in town, so my loyalties, again, would raise, would lay with the students, lay with families, and ultimately, student success. I did want to say that perhaps some people may have some preconceived notions of how things have happened in the past, and we can just continue along with what we've done in the past, but I'd like to question some issues here and perhaps bring some new things to the table. Finally, just to reiterate, if I'm elected, I promise to work for students and creating an environment conducive to their growth and allowing them to thrive and be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Well, I'm not an agent for change, I'm an agent for progress. I have been in El Segundo for twenty-six years. Twenty-six years I've been a member of El Segundo Rotary. I've been volunteering in the community, I've been involved in everything the Rotary does, from movie in the park to the Rubber Ducky Challenge on Main Street. I am a member of the Ed Foundation Board, I have been the chairman of that board for the past two years. I've served eight years on the El Segundo Unified School District Facilities Committee. I am invested in our town, I'm invested in our schools. I believe that a strong board that is working together is what El Segundo Unified School District needs. I am ready to be that person. I am ready to jump in and continue the progress that has been made to date. Many of my friends are former school board members, they are mentors of mine. I appreciate everything that they have done to bring us to this point, where we, as Tracy just mentioned, were named the number nineteen school district in California. That's out of over one thousand school districts. We were named the number twelve school district for teacher satisfaction. We have a lot of great things going on here. This is not the time for change. This is the time to support the great cabinet and great superintendent that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
I'm going to say it again. I want to move on. This is my next step. I am about change, I am about change. I, when I, I guarantee you, when I started teaching thirty-nine years ago, things have changed, and they're going to continue to change, and if they don't, something's wrong. So to say that I don't care about change is incorrect, but I am a very, very proud member of the El Segundo Teaching Faculty. The twenty-two years I taught at the middle school were amazing. I made some very, very good friends in my students, in my parents... I made some very, very good friends in my students, in my parents, and in my colleagues. And anybody who knows me knows what I am and who I am and why I want to be a school board member. I'm in it 100%. Yes, that's a math thing. For the kids, because I want to continue to make this district the best district that it can be.
Thank you. Tracy?
All righty then. Yes, thank you all for coming this evening and listening to us yet again, talk about many, many things that are important. I do hope you've gotten a good sense of my dedication to our schools and my need to stay well-informed on everything that we're doing here, in every detail. My skills have been well-tested, as you know. I've served the last four years under some very interesting circumstances, and I am always about keeping up to date with the latest and best things we can be doing for our students. And knowing what works and what doesn't is ever-important. We are in this continuous cycle of improvement, and I support that 100%. I encourage anyone who doesn't know me well enough to go back and look at four years' worth of board meetings, if you have nothing else to do. They are on our school website, but you'll understand some of the discussions we've had, some of the challenges we face, and how I've worked through them. And as a bonus, I've worked through them as the president for two years in a row on this board, because these trying times have needed really focused leadership. And I will say that if I'm re-elected, I'll continue to make those fair, balanced decisions. I'm always doing everything to maintain or raise the level of our school district. And again, we are thrilled that it has gone up, even in challenging times. Our respect and progress has gone up. So I want to keep us on that path to continue to be a high-achieving district and offering our students the best educational experience they could have in a public school system. It's been an honor to serve on the school board for these last four years. I look forward to continuing to apply that experience moving forward. If you have any questions for me, you can reach me on various social media outlets, my email, at the grocery store, at the Blue Butterfly, where have you. I am willing to chat about this anywhere and everywhere, because it means a lot to me. And I'm here for the community for another four years, if you would so kindly elect me. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn?
Okay. So thank you very much for your thoughtful questions today and in the prior forum, and sorry if we didn't get to some of the questions that may have been on your mind that haven't yet been asked, but as Tracy said, I think we're all findable, so fire away. If there's still stuff you're not sure about, that you really want more information before you're ready to make your decision. I think we are in a particularly challenging time, and I have been sitting through the school board meetings as well for the last several months, coming out of COVID. And our teachers and the administration have been very conscious about that, in terms of how do we get the new baseline that we can start to build from? And, you know, thankfully, not that much of a dip. So there have been some areas where there's some, you know, challenges, and the teachers are meeting and focused on where are they specifically, and what is it that we can do about that? So giving them the care and attention they need to help bring the district out of COVID is one of the things they need help with. And for our kids, reintegrating, you know, that was traumatic for our kids, it was traumatic for our parents, you know, too, going through that. So the whole community's kind of in a little bit of a recovery mode based on that. But I think that's the thing about El Segundo, is it is a community. So to the extent that we approach this as a community, we have a lot better opportunity to constructively work our way forward through it. So I'm going to work hard to make sure that ESUSD retains and ideally grows its status. It's like, don't screw it up. We're in great shape. The challenge is not finding proven approaches that work. There are many, many proven approaches that are out there. It's the ability to be agile and scale those approaches appropriately in our classrooms. And we live in a district that has the right number of schools to be able to be agile and experimental and learn from mistakes and trudge to the next one forward, but with a lot of feedback back and forth. So that's what I'm excited about, is we really can do some things in this district that others can't. And I hope you give me an opportunity to be a part of that process.
Thank you. Let's have a round of applause for our candidates. We definitely appreciate you taking the time to be here. For people who want to see this again or tell their friends about it, this will be passed to the El Segundo Women's Club, and we will have, you can go to our website, elssegundowomensclub.org, and get to our YouTube channel to re-watch. And I do now want to make an announcement. This is so funny facing this way. Next week, on Wednesday, the 19th, the El Segundo Women's Club will be hosting a city council forum, and it will be at our clubhouse at the corner of Mariposa and Standard. And if you wish to submit questions to that, I think in the, at the table in the back, they can help you. And thank you again for coming. Thank you for coming.
So we need to thank Jennifer and the Women's Club for...
Thank you all.
These aren't easy things to put on. Thanks.